All right, good morning, or maybe good afternoon. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham. Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us compose our heart for prayer. Dear Holy Father, we come to you the humblest way we know how. Come about his and humble hearts looking unto you. You are the author and the finisher of our faith, God. We lift up our mayor, we lift up the council, we lift up every department head. We ask that your Holy Spirit will lead, guide, and direct in this meeting on today. We need you in everything that we do. We give you praise, we give you glory, we give you honor. We ask it all in Jetha's name and all that agreed, said amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and council meeting held on February 27th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations.
Mr. President, I think Chief Crane left. Is he here? Y'all seen him? Okay, I'll pass then.
Okay, all right, we'll get him next time. All right, well, I have one today. I've invited my good friend, the principal of Striplin Elementary School, Mr. Anthony Ash, to come and be recognized for his school performance this past school year. So, Anthony, if you'll come to the podium over here and if you want to bring your staff person with you, that'd be great, too. Just bragging on Mr. Ash, he's the principal at Striplin Elementary. He's a Litchfield High graduate, was a football star over there, and played, I think, at Tennessee Tech. And little did I know, he's also an academic star. Anthony is bilingual. Anthony speaks English, of course, but he also speaks Spanish. And it comes in very handy at Striplin Elementary School as there's a fairly large Hispanic population. I happen to be involved with the after-school backpack program, not after-school, but a weekend backpack program at Striplin for the last nine years. And that's how I've really gotten to know Anthony and become a big fan of Mr. Ash. And so, I wanted to welcome you here today and really to applaud you for the score increase, much like Floyd Elementary had a large increase, Striplin Elementary had a large increase. And I want you to tell us about that.
Good afternoon. First and foremost, I just want to say thank y'all so much for allowing myself and Mrs. Walton to be here. She's our reading coach, and last year was her first year with us at Striplin Elementary. And so, we did increase by eight points on our school score. Now, when I first arrived at Striplin Elementary, I had a vision and a goal and to really try to create a whole lot more belief in our school because sometimes some parents as close by want to send their kids to private schools and those kind of things and other schools. But, you know, throughout the efforts of all of our staff members and our parents, we are turning the place around. We're not at our goal yet. We still have a lot of work to do, but we're very, we believe that it's possible. And we're just excited about the things that's coming in the future. And we're looking forward to just continue to show up every day, positive attitude. We affirm our kids every single day to bring out the greatness in them. And we're just excited about the future and just thank y'all so much. We love y'all and thank y'all so much for the support. I can say Councilman Wilson, every year pours into our school financially, and he shows up at the career fairs and those things. And also, Councilwoman Latham and, you know, so many of you. So, thank y'all for that. We love you. And thanks for celebrating us today because honestly, I mean, it's sad what I'm about to say, but it's kind of something that we're really not used to, but we want to get used to it because we have a lot of world-class, first-class teachers, custodians, secretary personnel. And so, we're going to keep working hard for this community so we can try to help our community shine a little bit more. So, thank y'all so much, okay?
Man, thank you so much. Mayor Ford.
Mr. Nash, I want to say thank you. I was able to speak to, I think, as a leadership group or something, and I had a blast. But the way you've taken that school, it's an older building, and turned it into a, I mean, it looks brand new and it's state-of-the-art. And I'm not saying we don't need a new one. But what you do down there and Ms. Walton, I know them a long time. This is Johnny Johns's niece from Gadsden, and I coached her sister in softball and a lot of other people. So, I just want to say thank y'all for what you do. And I know Ms. Walton does a great job with the reading, too. I've witnessed it firsthand. But you run, I wish, I wish all our schools, and I know they are, but you run an excellent school. And I want to thank you for what you do.
Thank y'all so much. And as you was talking about in the other meeting, once we get finished up here, we'll need to head back. But just want to say that, hey, we love y'all, thank y'all, and God bless y'all. And we're excited about our partnership and looking forward to seeing you on your Thursday when you come over and help us with those bags after school. It's always great, you know, seeing you out there helping us.
Thank you. It's an honor and a pleasure. And I was going to mention Ms. Walton, she's a lifelong friend of my daughter. They've been friends since kindergarten, or maybe a little bit before. And it's, I'm not surprised that her abilities are rising above and beyond. She was always very intelligent, very nice, very sweet girl, very caring. And I know she's an excellent teacher and knows exactly what she's doing and knows what those children need in order to succeed. All of your other teachers fit that same category, but since Grace is here, I'll brag on Grace, I've known her her entire life. So, but thank you for what y'all do. Striplin's a great school, Mayor Ford. I've been in there for about the last nine years. And Mr. Ash is your kind of guy.
He is. Grace is a good athlete, too. Don't let her fool you.
That's right, that's right. But Mr. Ash, you know, I think he brings an athletic perspective to management, so to speak. So, I kind of like that, too. So, thank you for what you do. And we're encouraged by him. Look forward to having you back. Anytime that you've got some good news, we'll certainly love to, love to hear about it. So, thanks.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If I could just point a privilege here, I do want to say that obviously Striplin is a great school. It's put out some fine young men in this community. Yeah, me. I was talking about me.
I went to Striplin also.
You can have two alumni here.
And I'll also say that I think the understatement of the century is when Mayor Ford said that building's kind of old. It was old when I went there 40 years ago. So, what you've done with it, like Mayor Ford said, is unbelievable. It looks great. Every time I walk in there, there's an energy in that building. And I think it largely comes from you and your attitude. I've seen you, us walk in the halls and kid will come out of classroom in trouble and you go, oh, what's going on, man? Did you have a bad morning this morning? Just go, go sit in my office. I'll come talk to you in a minute. You know, even when a kid's in trouble, he feels like he's being loved, you know? And I think that means the world. And I've seen it firsthand. So, thank you for what you do over there, man.
Well, the last thing I will say, you know, because as Councilman Back alluded to earlier, I did attend school at Tennessee Technological University and had plenty of opportunities there. But kind of like you all, I always want to come back and make a difference where I'm from. So, being a Gadsden City Schools alumni, you know, of Litchfield High School, I have a chip on my shoulder. And I believe in this place. And just like you all are doing great things and trying to be innovative, it's the same way at our place. So, we just need to, hey, stay motivated, stay positive, and just keep trying to move our city forward, you know, one day at a time.
Great job.
Catwoman Latham has a comment.
Let me just say thank you, Mr. Ash. Congratulations on your improvement. We are a family, grew up across the street from each other. But more so, you were a student at Litchfield. And he was, he was a star student and athlete. And so, I did not have the privilege of teaching you. I always wanted to because you were just that great. But congratulations and keep up the good work.
All right. Thank y'all so much. Hey, we love y'all and God bless. Hope you have a great rest of the day, okay?
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Y'all, that's, as they exit, that's just, that's what's right with the Gadsden City School system right there, is leadership like that and teachers like that. We're very grateful. And they're all over the city. The principals and teachers like that fill our halls of Gadsden City Schools every day, day in and day out. I'm actually married to an educator. And believe me, it doesn't stop at 3:00. It's almost like a fireman. It's 24/7. It's seven days a week. And they are the epitome of just a good person and good stewards. All right, we'll move on to number 8, unfinished business. This is 8A is an ordinance. This is rezoning property located at 1428 East Broad Street from R2 multifamily residence district to B2 general business district. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. The owner has requested the rezoning to operate a barber beauty shop on the property, which has historically been in operation as a neighborhood business. However, the property has been vacant for six months, and this requires a new business license to operate. Because the property abuts a B1 neighborhood business district, it does qualify for rezoning consideration. The Gadsden Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
There's a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes. Yes, Council.
I just want to just speak briefly to this because I want to make sure that our constituents know that we hear you. I don't ever want you to think you come to City Hall and you're not heard, or your voice is not important because it is. But do you have, I want to make sure that we're aware, we had two issues with this particular property as a legislative body. We had a business that was zone residential, and we want to fix the things we can fix. So, that's the first thing. We want to make sure this business, which is zone residential, is rezoned properly. The other issue is the information I have received from the community in the past about the things that were going on. And I have the utmost confidence in the mayor, our police department, that if that second issue does arise under the new owners and new tenants, that the mayor will handle that part. But the part that we need to take care of are, I feel like I need to help correct as a legislative body. I want to make sure that I do my part to make sure we don't deter businesses from coming into our city. So, I just want to take a minute to address that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just know in the planning committee, I know this was talked about, and I know we had some people come up and had, you know, some situations with it where the old owners did basically were having like a place where they were partying and hanging out 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. And with this new, the way we're doing it now, that it will be a legit business district, and it's a legit business owner buying this thing and bringing it back to the barber shop. So, it should actually calm everyone down and make it right. That's what I understood.
All right, thank you for that. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance rezoning property located at 3200 West Megan Boulevard and two vacant lots on Shaheen Avenue from R2 multifamily residence and B2 general business district to I1 light industry district. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The owner intends to develop a business park in the West Megan area. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think I saw Mr. Blowerock here earlier. He may have left. I think we said last week he moved here, I think, from Illinois and has invested in a lot of property here. I think he has a proven track record. So, I look forward to seeing what he does with the, with the park that he's looking to develop. Any other thoughts? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 9 is a resolution endorsing the Gadsden Comprehensive Plan. This is to endorse the Grow Gadsden Plan as adopted by the Planning Commission on February 21st, 2024, to be used as a tool for planning Gadsden's future land use, development, and redevelopment. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to the guys from GMC for sitting through this last two hours of meetings just to get this one, one resolution passed.
That is, I did see those guys out there. Brian, thank you for being here. Thank you for the 14, 16 months of arduous hard work and pouring in there. I think we've all been blown away by the presentation and by the, by the data points that are in the plan and by the vision that has coupled with Mayor Ford's vision marrying with what you guys have presented. I think we have a great tool that'll move the city forward to heights that we've never seen before. So, very, very excited and look forward to seeing you at a bunch of ribbon cuttings down the road for the, for the years to come. Anybody else have any comments? No? All right. Then clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing conveyance of surplus property. Pace Butler Corporation has offered to purchase 30 cell phones and five iPads for a total of $175, along with complimentary data erase destruction for each device in compliance with DOD and NIST standards. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Kayla David Allen to provide art classes at the Gadsden Museum of Art. This will allow the museum to offer more classes, and the city will receive 30% of the monthly gross proceeds. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to say Ray does an excellent job of seeking these people out, and it's a partnership. And I just want to give kudos to Ray at the museum.
Thank you. I think he does, too.
I was going to say the same thing. I spoke to him briefly last week after our meeting, and he was explaining to me a little bit more about the revenue they're going to be able to generate off of this and the services provided to the city. Ray does a great job, man.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Tillman Consulting LLC for right-of-way acquisition services for the Hickory Street Bridge replacement project, and the amount is $11,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13, it comes under first reading. This is an ordinance authorizing non-exclusive franchise to Crown Castle Fiber LLC. This is for construction and maintenance of fiber optic transmission line within certain public rights, rights of way. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. I've been notified that this would be nice if we could suspend the rules today and, and vote on this.
I don't have any objection to that.
Do I have any objections to that? Okay, all right.
I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and consider this non-exclusive franchise agreement under new business today.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Councilman Smith, second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And Mr. President, if I could just add a little context, context to this since we, we brought it up under new business. This is a third-party company that lays fiber optic cables throughout the city, and then they actually lease that, that cableage to cellphone providers and internet service providers. And the city gets a percentage of the revenue that they generate from those service providers. So, all we're doing is telling them that they can run their fiber optic cables on our utility poles in our right-of-way.
And I believe this will result in improved communication capabilities because we'll have stronger signals. Is that correct?
This will put us in line of coming to a gig city, which helps with industrial development, too.
That's right. Yeah, that's, that's very, that's vital. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. All right, number 14, item 14 is new business. I believe we have a few today.
Yes, sir. I've got several here, Mr. President, starting with a resolution authorizing change order number one with Thrive Outdoor. Thrive Outdoor is a landscape architecture and maintenance firm that we contract with for, to maintain and, and keep up several different facilities around the city. This is actually a change order in the amount of $35,696. The change order is for making repairs to the, to the area surrounding the slides at Miranda Park. They've experienced some significant erosion since being constructed. Turns out that the kids are actually running up through the crushed gravel, and it's created some trails, and the water erosion's gotten really bad. So, this would be in addition of, again, $35,696 to redo the foundation around the slides and install some landscaping and native plants that would prevent that erosion in the future. So, with that in mind, I'd ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, my next one is from the legal department. This is a resolution authorizing an independent consulting agreement with Public Safety Consultants TE LLC. This is for $3,000 a month, and this consulting agreement will be used to do a deep dive kind of evaluation of the police department and things we can do to improve the morale in the police department, and things we can do to improve our hiring and, and recruitment of new officers. As I mentioned in the pre-council, we're down some 30-some officers right now. So, this is going to be some outside help that we're bringing in to help put a new set of fresh eyes on it to see if we can come up with some good strategies for recruiting more officers from here locally within the city of Gadsden. So, with that in mind, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Second.
Good second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And just to clarify, again, this is $3,000 a month that we're paying the consultants, and it's a one-year contract, but we can terminate it at any time if, if their work's completed. So, with that in mind, I'd like to move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the next one comes from the Public Works Department. This is amending Section 106-86 through 106-86-1 of the City of Gadsden Code of Ordinances to create, well, it does a couple of things. It changes the two-month deposit or two-quarter deposit that we were charging to a one-month activation fee or one-quarter activation fee, one billing cycle. So, it'll reduce the amount you have to pay to get new water services started. And it also adds a feature of the $1 voluntary contribution to the Gadsden City Board of Education. So, this would be, again, it would be applied to your quarterly bill, $1 a quarter or 33 cents a month. And the idea would be that you could opt out of this if you didn't want to give it, but otherwise, you'd be charged $1 a quarter on your garbage bill. And that would go to the Board of Education. So, with that in mind, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
I move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mayor Ford.
The police just asked me, there's a white Honda Passport being blocking somebody, a vendor outside, if they would not mind moving that vehicle, please.
Okay. Anybody driving a white Honda Passport? If so, could you please?
There's one in every class.
That's your buddy. That's all of our buddy. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. President, I got two more. One is from the special events at the AMP. Resolution authorizing an amendment to our agreement for the bash, the Parrot Head Party at the AMP. This amends the original agreement to add $750 because the artist will now be bringing a pedal steel guitar player as part of the act. So, we're adding $750 to the contract to compensate the pedal steel guitar act. So, if there's no objections, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, last one. This is from the Fire Department, actually. So, as many of you know, we're building a couple of new fire halls here in the Gadsden City Limits. And one of those will be located up on Nakalula Falls, built with imported Carrera marble from Italy. I'm just kidding. So, as they tear down the old fire hall and they're going to build a new, and they think it's going to take about a year to build it. So, we're buying essentially a mobile home from Clayton Homes for $46,000. And they have agreed at the point that we purchase it, they are committing to buy it back when we're done with it at 90% of the original purchase, purchase price. So, that'll be about $31,000 when they buy it back from us. So, the net cost is about $15,000 to have a temporary fire hall essentially while we're constructing the new one at Nakalula Falls. And so, it'll, it'll work out basically to about 1,200 bucks a month, I think, essentially in rent, once they buy it back from us. So, in order to make sure they don't have any interruption of services up there on the mountain, I'd like to ask us to suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, I believe that concludes our new business. So, item 15 on the agenda is department reports, committees, and boards. I think we have from the EMA today.
Mr. President, I asked the EMA to report.
Yes.
But there's some inclement weather coming in that we need to be aware of.
All right.
Welcome, Mark.
Hey, good afternoon. Director Mumert sends his regards. He's in an online class and chained to a desk for four hours every day, right in the middle of the day this week. So, I'm representing. The brief synopsis, we're going to have some heavy rain later in the week. Could potentially impact Saturday. I know the kids fishing rodeo is this Saturday morning. The Weather Service is believing that most of the rain, the heaviest rain, will be out by daylight Saturday. Could be some lingering showers. There's the possibility of river flooding way down in South Alabama, like Talaposa County down in there, Alexander City. If you hear anything about river flooding, it is not for here because the National Weather forecast is a regional forecast for counties this far on each side of, each side of Birmingham. So, anyway, you all have a brief, could have a little thunder shower, nothing serious, nothing severe expected this week. So...
So, Mr. President, I think, could we be expecting anywhere from two to four inches of rain on Friday, which would cause some temporary flooding?
Starting with Thursday night through Saturday morning, could have three to four inches of rain locally. Could be locally heavier if, you know, one big cloud just sits somewhere for a while. But that's going to be the, the big rub. And with that happening overnight, Friday night, and the culmination of all that rain, we could have some minor flooding problems Saturday morning. So, that would initiate a call-out for several people. So, need to be prepared for that.
Yeah, be saturated, I guess, throughout the week.
Yes, absolutely. And it, and it could usually lead to trees falling even on their own without any wind. We're already pretty saturated as it is. So, more rain will kind of exacerbate that problem.
All right, thank you. Any questions, anybody?
All right, you all have a copy of this, so enjoy. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Can I, can I, can I just put something in real quick? I had a report from over, over at Dwight Park, that storm shelter, they say there's an inside or internal alarm
at Dwight Park, that storm shelter, they say there's an inside or internal alarm going off they can hear. Can somebody check on it? Is that you guys that will check on that?
I would almost bet that the weather radio that's inside there has alerted.
Okay.
But I will check that.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other reports from departments or committees or boards? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to item number 16, citizen request. Joseph Cole is here to speak on support for water filtration for senior citizens' homes and support for the Fire and Police Department. Welcome, Mr. Cole.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Two weeks ago, I met with the Water Works Board, and I spoke about them preparing, excuse me, I spoke to them about getting water filtration for seniors. We have some seniors here now, and some they left earlier, because some of these people have been paying water bills for years, and they're not able to get the water filtrations for their homes. I had spoken to Councilor Robinson about this, and what I want, the reason I'm here today, I asked them to do that because they have received $180 million in the lawsuit that was filed against the businesses who polluted the Coosa River. And what, the reason I'm here with the council, I know you do not have a vote, but if, with your support, if you support this, then I would like for you to speak to the members of the board. You do fortunately have two board members here because the president of the council is on the board and also Councilor Robinson. So we have citizens here who are not able to get this in their homes. When they wash their hands, when they cook, all this PFAS is in the water, so it's very harmful to them. I know that the water board is preparing, I think, Thursday to take bids on a osmosis thing, but the point of the matter is people need assistance now. And I really would like for the council to go on record, these are your constituents. Talk to the board members. Let them know that you support it. If you don't support it, let us know. But you have two members here. You can let them know that you support it. If you have support from the council, that would help. I know the mayor supports, at least he did a few months ago when I had a meeting with him. So hopefully that they can move on this. Their filters cost $300, and then there's an installment, whatever their money is. With $180 million, it should not be an issue. Plus, I informed them, they can follow what the community development does. They go by the age and the amount of funds that they make. That way it'll be a whole lot easier. So I would appreciate it if the council were to go on record. And today, when you do your remarks, I hope you will let these individuals know that you do support it. And if you don't, just say so. The other matter, because this has been a long day, I was stating that I support the Fire Department and the Police Department, and I want to thank this council and this mayor, because in the past, it has really been too much planned to try to get the council to give the firefighters and the policemen a raise. A little bit of something. But you have given them a raise. It may not be what they want. It's a whole lot better than what they have been receiving, and I want to thank you for that. Also, I want to mention that we do have a good fire chief, good have a police chief. There's a lot of rumors going around, and I'm wondering, I don't deal with rumors. I received a number of calls. I ignored the calls. But then I spoke to some individuals in Montgomery who are elected officials dealing with the rumors. The rumors are that the mayor is going to hire the former, the former sheriff of Edwah County. People feel like he's hiring him to get rid of the chief, and some say Inchkin is going to hire someone. But it's just flowing everywhere. I had about 10 calls today when I was coming in, wanting to know what is going on. So my personal feeling is I don't know what's going on. I'm just repeating the rumor. But I feel like this chief is one of the best chiefs of Gadsden that's had. Before he came on, many blacks were being beaten, people were being shot. No chief would talk to you. They didn't say anything about it. They cleared it, whatever. We don't have that issue with this chief. He's straight up. He does his job. And so if this is a rumor, and I'm hoping it is, but the mayor's here, he can speak to that, because I'm tired of getting these calls, because I don't think there's cause for this. He's the mayor. He can hire whoever he wants to hire. He has that right. But I, he cannot fire the chief because that come under the Civil Service Board. But people say if someone is in charge, they can bring the, the chief up on charges. So hopefully, we can get this cleared. But I do want to thank you for what you've done. I want y'all to speak to Mr. Robinson and President Back. Let them know you support the matter of getting these citizens, and if you do that, I'm pretty sure this will come through. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you for being here today. Mark, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'm just very forgetful these days.
Oh, that's okay. Okay. Oh, you left. Okay. We were all going to use that this afternoon.
By the way, Thursday is the get-it-done day. Sunny and 75.
Oh, okay. Don't let my wife know that. It's, all right. Well, we will move on to remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford.
Mr. President, I just want to remind everybody, today is voting day. The polls open at seven. They will close at seven, so please don't forget to vote. Also, we're going back to DC next week. We have good news. The 6.5 million appropriation from Congressman Adher Hope for the relocation of 411 should have a final vote next week. So we look forward to that. I want to also thank the employees. Happy Read Across America Week. We had several department leaders serve as guest readers in the Gadsden City School System this week, and it was really, it was kind of a, a warm and fuzzy feeling, but it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed, I actually went to Mitchell and a lot of our staff, and I think Aaron from Engineering and Heath, and then went to some other schools, too. So we want to thank everybody in the city that did that. Our chiefs did that. I usually don't address speakers on a normal basis, but Mr. Cole and I have talked a couple of times. I will address the consultant, Mr. Cole. Yes, that was hired today. And yes, Mr. Inchkin is a part of that LLC. So we are not, Craig Ford, the mayor, is not trying to fire a police chief. We are trying to help our police department recruit police officers and identify what can we do to help that shortage, what Councilman Wilson said earlier, of 35 police officers plus the pay situation and some other items. So, you know, Sheriff Inchkin brings a wealth of knowledge with his electable situation for years as Edwah County Sheriff. He and Police Chief Jaggers are friends. So we're looking for an outside approach to that, and we're excited about it. So I think it's a positive thing in the right direction. So thank you. And if you don't mind, I'm going to excuse myself. We're meeting with some people for development for this City Hall, Mr. President.
All right. Yeah, thank you. All right. We'll start up on the mountain with Councilman
Robinson. Not going to say anything, but just, Mr. Cole, appreciate you coming in and talking to us. I know you were at the water board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and believe me, I know Mr., me and President Backer knew of that water board, where we're learning a lot. When I first got in there, that's, that's, that's more than just being on a board. You gotta, you gotta educate yourself and learn, learn a lot, and I'm still learning. But believe me, we are looking into it, and I'm with you on that. We can try to get that done. Okay? Thank you. So.
Councilwoman Minatra? Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
I just want to say, as I've said publicly before, I 100% support the idea of water filtration systems. So Councilman Robinson, President Back, there you go. Especially when it's somebody else's money, you know. If the Water Works Board just got $180 million, I'm all for it. I think they should do it for all the seniors, anybody who needs it.
All right.
That's all I have.
I saw you. All right. Councilman Avery? No comment. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say thank you, Mr. Cole, for sharing that information. I, too, am in favor of the water filters as many as we can get installed in people's homes. Thank Ms. Manez, the board, teachers, all those that showed up today. Swam. Thank you, Mayor Ford and council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Latham?
I just want to thank those who came this morning for the Recreation and Education Committee meeting. Some very positive things to look forward to with the inclusive field at Gadsden State, and we look forward to the partnerships that will begun today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Want to make an announcement, a couple announcements. One is that due to the National League of Cities Conference next week, there will be no work session or council meeting on Tuesday, March the 12th. Our regular schedule will resume on March the 19th. I want to reiterate Mayor Ford's comment about go out and vote. That's for, one of our bedrocks of democracy in our society is to vote. So please go vote. I have voted today. I voted before I got here this morning. Wasn't hard at all. They didn't prick my finger or anything. I just walked in there and voted after I showed them my identification. We have a nuisance and abatement hearing at 1:30 today in this room. It's our, we do that once a month, so I want to make that announcement. And want to thank you for your indulgence today. We've had a long morning so, so far. We started, some of us, at nine o'clock with the Education Recreation Committee, and I agree with Councilwoman Latham, very good meeting today. Y'all, the city is, is in for a real, really wonderful experience at the Gadsden Sports Park overall in general. But with the all-inclusive park that we are, that we've built over there, it is, it is, it is going to change lives for just a lot of people. It's going to provide opportunities for children with disabilities that they don't have currently in Gadsden. So we're real excited about that. And the collaboration with Edwah County School System and local companies that work with special needs children and, and students, this is just going to be a game changer for our whole community, in addition to, for those families. It's a beautiful park. Encourage you all to go look at it when you get a chance, when it's not raining, if the rain ever stops. So, but thank you for your time today, and with that, we will be adjourned.